Ready to start? So. With. Eighty one twenty four declarations of any this disclosable pecuniary interests. So hard to say.
It is.
Right, apologies for absence. Roger, from the received from councils, from the all and rights. Eighty three twenty four to confirm the minutes of the former. Heritage and events committee meeting held on the twenty first of February twenty twenty four, which were received by full council on the twenty seventh of February twenty twenty four. And the minutes of the former venues and market committee meeting held on the twenty fourth of March twenty twenty four, which received by full council on the twenty sixth of March twenty twenty four. Can they be confirmed as a true record?
Yes.
Right. Right, eighty four twenty four to review and discuss heritage and events committees terms of reference.
So, yeah, sorry. So you've all had sight of the proposed terms reference in the in the presentation packs. Do you want to go through them line by line?
But I mean, it's the major changes you highlighted in yellow. So it's basically just around the role of the committee in respect to finances, sort of the only release of standard change.
Yeah, and there's a there's another area which has been included just as an interim until we finalize the destination of the venues in terms of the charitable trust. So I think this committee would also review some of the aspects of using events until that time. Otherwise, it's got nowhere to report to.
And in the organisational structure that we approved at full council and the new committee structure, venue sits with corporate services. So I'd suggest that those last two bullet points there to review and approve all higher charges and bar operations and tea rooms is removed from this one and moved to corporate services terms of reference.
My understanding was it was just the compliance contracts and compliance.
Yeah, anything else? Oh, great, so move on to eighty six twenty four. Appointing a volunteer civic support team.
Do you want to propose a second?
Oh, sorry. Right, for the last item then, which was a review of the committee's terms of reference, can we have a proposer? And second. Now we can move on. To eighty five twenty four mayoral and civic events. Discuss delivered events and provide an update on those upcoming in the mayoral and civic calendar. This is just to note the update.
It is, but we haven't a gender item which has a full financial report. So what I've done today is just do some headlines in terms of the mayoral and civic events. You'll also see on the final page, but we'll get to that in a different part of the agenda. Also, the town events, but we're just concentrating on their mayoral and civic events in this in this item. So today, we think we have delivered the mayor making on the eighth of May and the civic reception on Friday. Mayor making seemed to go without any major issues. Forty six people attended the ceremony and it was followed by a buffet reception. I wasn't in attendance for the reception on Friday night. And the civic officer is now on holiday for a couple of weeks, so I haven't really caught up to review a debrief on that event, but.
Good to see. First thing to change, the academy choir pulled out in the afternoon, so they weren't actually there. It's a great success. I'm going to have a meeting with Alan sometime with yourself to discuss other things, okay?
Okay. And then going forward, the next mayor event is the mayor civic church service, which has been postponed into the twenty first of July.
Yeah, I've got a meeting with Tim and Peter Monday morning.
Okay, great. So, as you can see from the finance, what we do with the mayoral civic events and town events is we have an overall budget, as you see. In terms of the mayoral events, it's £4,800. And then we allocate sums of money within that £4,800 to the respective elements that come under that event heading. As you can see, mayor making is one of the bigger events of the year for the mayoral schedule. We allocate a thousand pounds to that and the actual expenditure was £442. So we 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 came in under budget and I think that didn't restrict or deflect any of the any of the meetings. So we have an underspend to move forward within that budget stream. The civic reception is again is probably the other big mayoral event. We do allocate quite a sum of money to that, actually. But again, it came in at just about half the sum allocated. So again, we have an underspend to carry forward, which is a good thing because if you look at that list at the end of the year, what usually happens is any of the underspends we need to to properly the mayor's Christmas lunch for the elderly and the lonely. That's been really popular over the last couple of years since its introduction. It does traditionally cost more than that because we do cater for about sixty to eighty people who come along. And they are nominated by various different organisational groups as as to who should attend and who shouldn't. So hopefully, by the time we get to the nineteenth of December, we'll have a nice sum to look after those who are lonely in need at that time of year. So we move on to the civic events. And the first one in the civic diary was D-Day on the sixth of June, Thursday. And again, we allocated thirteen hundred pounds to council to that event. And we came in four pound over, pretty good. One of the reasons why we came over budget, as you can see, the fourth item of that list on the right hand side, portable flag pole and base, cost £666. One of the reasons why we purchased that was because we weren't sure whether we could repair the flagpole to the point where we could raise a flag on top of the guild hall. You see the flag flying, it's scheduled to be repaired, it will be repaired in the next few weeks. But actually, that's turned out to be quite a nice investment and it comes within budget, pretty much. Because, as you'll as you'll talk about, as we go into remembrance events in a second, when we had the meeting with the RBO, one of the one of the events that they did talk to us about and asked us whether we could give a little bit more importance to was the fee power memorial day. And as you know, the fee power tree is along Nuns Bridges. And there's no flagpole there, but there will be with the mobile flagpole. So I think that will add some value and some gravitas to that to that memorial this summer. And we are also investing a little bit further along, maybe is the sound system. We're going to get a portable battery operated sound system. So it'll be easier for the team to to deliver things like Commonwealth Day, King's House. But again, fee power. When I attended last the fee power memorial tree, I couldn't hear a word the vicar said because Nuns Bridges at whatever time is quite a busy road. And there's always traffic going past and they don't, you know, respect what's going on, they don't know what's going on possibly. But I think if we can take the the speaker system down, it's nice and easy to set up. And and again, that will add a lot of value to that. As we were reminded by the Royal British Legion representatives, it should be an important diary date for us and probably hasn't been in the past. Because you may know lots of East Anglian servicemen were prisoners of war. And so there's a lot of relatives that people like to come over and pay their respects to. So, yes, we have a four pound over budget on that, or thirty four pound over budget, sorry. But I think the the investments that we've made stood us in good stead. I don't know whether there's any questions on that.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I really, I was apprehensive at first when we've had discussions in up to the D-Day celebrations. But at the end of the day, I thought it was awesome. So all the town councils worked really well with what they did. Everyone I spoke to was positive. I had no feedback whatsoever. When the only thing that I wish we'd have done differently was possibly ask whether it's supposed to be quiet for the minute services on, but I'm not sure how we could do that. You know, but apart from that, that minute silence, the people on the market was, you know, it's brilliant me, and the beacon went well. You know, just in case, I was worried about the trees going up.
I was worried about the trees moving.
And the proclamation in the morning was good fun, we had councils there. And the town crier. But I'm saying that I popped into want to highlight the day for me as I went into the Riverdale Centre, it wasn't our do. But my dad's friend, one of his few surviving veterans of D-Day, was actually there. And actually, meeting was quite quite good.
I think over the weeks leading up to D-Day, I think we've had lots of conversations with councillors and and council. And I think the team really got the message that the brief for that particular event must be poignant, it must be commemorative. The day next year is the one that we can do a completely different celebratory type event because it was victory in Europe and and there were street parties in the fall teams celebrating that. But this was a completely different event and I think the production that Katie and the team put together hit the mark. Again, credit to Terry in terms of talking to Warren Services about the beacon because actually, when I when I was having a meeting with Will about construction and we have given our thanks to Warren Services in in construction for that beacon. Nick had darted off to the to the cemetery's workshop to pick up the old gas powered rose. The last time we used that was a few years ago and he walked in and as I was saying, look, we've got to have something more substantial that's actually going to look a bit better. That was the one thing that we had the most complaints about. And he walked in and basically both Will and I looked at it and laughed because the rose is about that big. And that was on top of the guild hall roof and well. So actually, what we've got now, and again, the good thing is it's it was manageable, it's something that we can move around because we've put it on a base. So again, we can use it in in other areas. So I think, well, it wasn't an investment, it was a gift from Warren Services, but it's something that, again, we can use time and time again. So I don't know what's going to happen to the rose, but we certainly won't be using that beacon lighting. But I must admit, we were very lucky in terms of the weather, in terms of there's no wind because the market square is notorious for wind. And I was having nightmares about trees going up and.
Doug and Matt.
Firstly, I'd just like to echo this comment actually, I only attend a part of it, but thanks to all the staff and other councils, I know, worked hard to make it a successful event. I thought what I attended, it was really well done. And as yeah, I wanted to say, well, everyone involved, council and staff, it's like, but the amount of effort, I know, it was a lot of work. And one just quick question which is to make, and I just said it, it was an awful lot on, like, a lot of different tech being put out, I think. A lot of different things have been put out, so I'm just sent checking, is that everything in terms of, or is it other things where
So again, we will discuss the reason why some of these events can be doing it cost effectively. So the guys that you saw that were taking part in the production, we are going to talk about in another agenda item, a civic team of heritage ambassadors. They're probably the nearest we've got at the moment, they are volunteers, they do do those kind of events free of charge because they're committed and interested in trying to, you know, develop and and make some of these events.
So thinking about some of the other multimedia things we have, like the the lights will lit up on the side of the guild hall.
That's that's that was free of charge.
Cool, that's really good then. Actually, so it was so luxury effective and we'll probably tell you more about some of the elements, I just wanted to send check, I wasn't missing anything.
That's definitely the costs.
Thanks. Again, so just to echo now, but I, like Chris and most of us, were slightly worried at some of our previous meetings that we'd had. And I think the event, I left the event feeling like, oh, it went really well, it was a really good production from our end, a really good service to everyone. And not to blow smoke, but thank you for Terry for reaching out to Warren Services personally and arranging that. Do you think as a council, we could write a letter from the council thanking them because they did it for free? It was a gift. I know you personally thanked them, but maybe from something, a letter from Thetis Town Council thanking them for what they did for us for D-Day. Something for them to keep as far, I think, maybe they probably got one of the apprentices to do as well, which is incredibly thankful on our end, so something like that could be doable, maybe?
Absolutely, we can get we can get that sorted on, you know, on the official paper and perhaps it will be from the council, but perhaps the mayor can actually sign it off. And you're right, it was given to an apprentice and he was the same guy that constructed the the beacon a few years back on the Monk Road. So, yeah, big thanks to Josh for him.
Perhaps we could make a photo up, we can take it up to their factory. Yeah. I'm not wearing the robes, I'll have to change. You can do that.
And we also do one, my wife, because you did. I know you spoke to him, he said he, when I spoke to him, he said he's faithful to you. But I do think that that will help mend some bridges, it's not going to get him back, but it will mend some bridges. And he might be forthcoming with a later agenda item of recommending someone. I thought it was fantastic. The work, they opened the windows and strewn walks as I was up in the office, I think said it, brilliant.
A lot of catching up to get us there, isn't it, especially that last, oh yay, it went on forever.
Sorry, there was one thing I thought was a great event really, and there was an awful lot going on in here as well, with the displays upstairs. Lots of people trussed all the way upstairs to have a look at the the display that the kids have done, and they were worth looking at. One thing I would say, I'm not quite convinced that going forward, we need to be doing any events down at King's House now. So where we've where we've done bits of stuff with the flags and that down down there, perhaps we don't need to do it and we do it up here because this is the centre of our our world now. Perhaps that becomes it rather than anywhere else.
So, yeah, that's a decision for council. All I all I would say is that you've got four or five flag poles down there. So maybe, and let's take this as an example, the main flag raising ceremony should have been here, but it doesn't mean to say we can't fly flags from there because it is our main thoroughfare of of the town, the High Street. So whereas we did it in reverse, while the official flag raising is being held at King's House, Tom, John and myself were sorting out the flag here that was going to be flying for the rest of the event, so we'll just spin that round. Okay.
One go over the whole ground, but the bit that I was particularly pleased about with D-Day was I thought the tone of the whole event was spot on. And I saw a few things online and, you know, felt more like celebrations. Whereas actually, the tone of the day was quite respectful and actually quite educational, the history of it on the presentation on the night, you know, there's a really good audience, which was fantastic. But actually, I came away feeling as if I understood more about what D-Day was about and I think that was really useful because a lot of people don't know what D-Day was about. And I was just going to make a couple of observations about the civic, the mayoral side. It's not a criticism, it's just something that maybe we want to bear in mind for the future. With the civic reception, the more we fill the hall with tables and chairs, the less people network. The whole point of a reception is about networking, getting to know everybody at the start of the mayoral year, that sort of thing. And I know we need to have some tables and chairs for, you know, people that are elderly and infirm. But I think having at least some space for people to stand and talk would be really useful. I mean, in the old days, we had no tables and chairs, which was completely the wrong way because people literally had to go home because they couldn't stand up any longer. But I did feel as if it's a sort of, it discourages people from mingling, which I think is unfortunate.
So I did, I know what you're going to say, but can I just say something?
I know you asked for tables and chairs, as I say, it was.
I did, when I set when I set the room up in the afternoon, I double checked with Kerry as to whether that, we've never done that before, Terry. You're a long serving councillor, you know how it usually is. We do have chairs usually all around the perimeter of the room. And every so often, we have small square tables for people to put plates and cups down. And I did say that if you do this, people will gravitate to clicks and not move around. I don't know whether that happened, but Chris did want some tables because your guests were.
Agent.
But I think we overdid it with ten with ten tables.
I spoke with my my wife at the meeting, basically, what you're saying is right. I understand the tables because some of us are getting on, myself included. But also, it did sort of take away from the the process of going around. Yeah, I mean, last year, this is only my second one, last year, I tend to stand in the corner because didn't have a clue what was going on. And I didn't know anyone there, so I was quite happy stood in my little corner there. But it would have, that time would have been nice to have some tables and chairs. But I think it was, yeah, maybe something in the middle.
The other thing for those people who have not attended previously, it also looked as if it was a more substantial refreshment in terms of not to have pace. You you expected to be either a buffet or or plated, you know. So and that's not how we traditionally do it, I would say that. The budget is quite substantial, so we can change that kind of thing if we wish to. But, yeah, I think I agree, probably probably the biggest criticism.
I think that actually made it quite difficult for the servants as well. They're trying to do a stand up canapé walk around and explain. And instead, they've got to go around tables. Was all for them, I thought, but.
It's not it's not a prison, it's just, you know.
Did you want to say something?
It was, well, I spoke to the officer and said, I would like X amount of tables. After how many people come in and go last thing is over the hundred. So, you know, eight or nine tenths are quite right, knowing the ages, some of them. I was, even last year, I sat with Vic in the corner and didn't mingle and there was no tables. This year, I've learned, and I went around nearly every single table and bored people to death, you know, talking stuff like this. So I think, as you say, possibly a happy medium because I remember one of the other ones I went to, we had a quite elderly councillor there and I had to go and get her a chair because she couldn't stand. So I was trying to get the balance and, you know, possible next time, six tables, five tables.
I think the other thing we should really need, there is a little bit more information on on the invitation. I think we need to say it's canapé. I know Matt came into the office earlier that day and said, what is the food arrangements tonight? I said, I'd eat it by with you if.
It was lovely, it said that.
I think going forward, I I I, from my perspective, I think a mix of both actually works because those that are older, we obviously feel more comfortable sitting down and taking a break. The networking and God knows, I've been in many past couple of weeks, they're all outstanding environments where people and the cannabis and nibbles, they should just move around, people, it trades with glasses and drinks. The service will often go around the people, just kind of collect empty glasses and do the whole thing like that. It's just on the go, moving and events where people just move around, talk to this, talk to that, and they just network their way. Obviously, I think we still should stick to some shares, maybe two or three tables. And our common sense will say that most people keep the seat to themselves, elderly, they get tired and obviously the older we sit because that's just common sense and a bit polite, to be honest. I don't think there's an issue. But I think we should have spread number of tables for those that need it and keep a standing environment, it's more effective and helps network in my perspective.
I'd say one thing great with you, we're talking a lot about older people, which is fair enough, but I'd also say I appreciate the tables because my daughters could come and sit down somewhere. So, you know, it's the other end of the stage, as well, definitely think a happy medium can be struck, but table is not all bad.
Let's make one more quick one. And on the D-Day expenditure list, there's the Euro point five. And I assume that was for the immersive experience side of stuff.
So that cost is also for the guys on D-Day that did the readings and things on stage. But the reason it's that price is because it was held for the weekend. So we did Friday and Saturday with the immersive stuff as well.
So these sheets are about expenditure, is there a sheet somewhere about income? Because presumably, we're ticket sales for the immersive experience.
The immersive experience, we grossed something like seven hundred pounds, but I haven't, we we haven't put income on that because we're just tidying up to make sure we get just the amount, but it's it's seven hundred and something.
Okay, maybe you sort of see in context, so see, again, it's thirteen hundred, that five hundred is quite expensive. But actually, that meant that we had income, which we otherwise wouldn't have had.
So the taking, we have a steady stream of people all day long, we had three schools that came in to look at the exhibition upstairs. But we have a steady stream of visitors all through the day. In the evening, where we were competing against the red line in the Royal British Legion, and I'm sure they did well as well. But we we grossed something like three hundred and fifty pounds in the evening for tea, coffee, drinks and wine and so. Again, you know, we're up against a sort of an almost hidden entrance, but we did, we did encourage people to come come through. And I was quite pleased with the fact that we we grossed that amount on that kind of event.
Going on from what you just said about the British Legion, now, we're now going to go on to that bit?
No, not that one, sorry.
On the on the D-Day, yeah, or during the D-Day, you're obviously, you know, I come in and volunteer. And I went in and had a chat with them and said, like, they're contacted, I think, all right. And it was quite rude, to say the least, they're nothing to do with the British Legion. Yet they chose to tag on the bank of our D-Day thing and put tables out on the market square that we're spoons pay for.
So there has been changes at the Royal British Legion that I only learned on on the day. But they did put the tables and chairs onto that area of the market square without any request. It was too late by then, Victor sort of, you know, stamped our feet and laid the law down. So to be honest, we didn't do anything about it. I still, I still, because I I honestly thought when they were, when I saw them doing that, it is a commemorative, I know it's our, it's a commemorative day, Royal British Legion, I didn't realise the.
But that's a club and they've said openly stated, nothing to do with the British Legion.
But I wasn't aware of that, but actually, there is some real differences now because if you notice, Rob, who was the standard bearer on the day, never went into that British Legion once, which is really weird because he's the official standard bearer. So I think we need to investigate because we are going to go on in this agenda. So I think we need to investigate because we are gonna go on in this agenda item to the meeting that we had with the three representatives from the Royal British Legion about uh upcoming events, which we need to talk about some potential costs and things. Um, and, and the fact that we are taking more of responsibility around the, the Remembrance Parade. Some of the conversations we had that evening, um, I'm not sure whether they still stand because it needed some support from the British Legion. And if it's not that kind of setup now, who do we go to? Who do we talk to?
I, I did speak on Saturday, um, and I found out that they, they've now split, so they've fallen out with each other essentially. The bar is a separate thing, that's just a club. The Royal British Legion, um, standard bearer of Rob is doing all that work, and then the poppy appeal is something different. So you've got three different parts to it. So whilst it says Royal British Legion on the door, that's, that's not what people are getting. It's just a club.
And quite, um, quite rude about it.
And they, they have quite fallen out with each other, I don't know whether it was after our meeting. But um they, they met separately, and because they decided that they wouldn't have meetings any longer in the RBL downstairs, they had it in the Black Horse and then they fell out while they were there, so I think it's quite complicated.
Hmm.
But it does mean that we need to take a bigger responsibility in organising it, because otherwise it, you know, it will clearly go wrong.
So in terms of just giving you an update from that meeting, I don't know whether Vic or Matt wants to say anything. But um we had three representatives from the Royal British Legion at the time.
If I just, if I just, you know, got the Sunday background.
Yeah, yeah, Rob, Rob was there, uh, Mandy and Heather, uh, together with Vic, Mac, uh, and myself. And we had a meeting to talk about how the council wanted to take a greater part in uh helping and supporting and delivery of a remembrance concert as well as the remembrance Sunday parade. Um, and uh we came up with one or two variations from what's happened in previous years, certainly the roots is one of them. Um, the roots will, and again, they were in agreement after um a little bit of a discussions. But the route will still be that they form up uh along the riverside, they will parade through the riverside walk. And rather than go along Tanner Street and up Well Street, they will turn left and go up King Street, around the roundabout onto Guildhall Street and enter um the market square where they usually do through the Royal British Legion uh entrance. One of the real reasons for doing that is because it's a lot safer. Uh, it, it means that we close half of the roads instead of Tanner Street and Well Street. By not closing Tanner Street and Well Street, we also keep open all the car parks. And as you know, there are a couple of thousand pounds, uh, a thousand pounds, a couple of thousand people that come down to pay their respects and car parking is essential. So I think that solves a problem in two respects. Um, we still need, and it's our responsibility, we've taken it on to close the roads um around Guildhall Street and the bottom section of Castle Street.
Um.
And Well Street probably.
And Well Street, um, but what it does allow is traffic to still move around to car parks along Raymond Street and, and uh, and, and up and out of town in the various other routes, exit routes. So it's still one, it, it won't affect as many people, albeit it's only a short period of time. So, so uh Rob uh agreed to that, uh, and um that, that will be the route for this year. In terms of um what's happening on the marketplace, um, we uh, we, we will take um ownership as well of, of some of the areas that have not been our responsibility. We've supported the RBL in the past, but they're clearly our responsibility. We've talked about the sound system, um, the sound system's not adequate. Um, and there has always been this argument about it's the Royal British Legion's event on the market square, ours is it, ours is a reception. That's clearly not the case now, we take ownership of all of it. So um we are gonna hire in the system, uh, there's only a couple of times we need a system of this calibre. And it's really the, because, you know, two thousand people spread right across the market square and into Guildhall Street uh and in front of the post office. As you heard um on D-Day, on Thursday, the system that we have for people who are within the market square is probably adequate now. Uh, we also had a chat about um uh someone who's gonna help us in respects of that, and in Christmas, we're gonna have some additional speakers to help us uh make sure that when, again, two thousand people come into the town, uh, that the, uh, the sound will gravitate where it needs to. But clearly we have to hit the back of the post, uh, hit the front of the post office. Um, so uh it's gonna cost us three hundred pounds to hire in that system and hopefully we won't have those complaints in the future. The other thing that we spoke to them about is again, uh, we always get criticism about not enough song sheets, not enough hymn sheets going out. People don't, you know, they need those. Uh, Mandy um assured us that she hands out six hundred and fifty a year. But when we have two thousand people in the market square, there's clearly gonna be people who, who don't get them. I talked about there is a time, there's a lull between the time that they're forming up to when they start to parade. And the Royal British Legion representatives then have to rush down and help that forming up process, which means we miss a real opportunity to hand out uh hymn sheets. And again, this is where I think our heritage ambassadors, that we're gonna talk about in a little while, will come into play. Because that's an ideal time, we've got a big space in the middle that we can actually get those hymn sheets out and people and, and order of service, if you like. So people know exactly what's happening. So I think again, we should improve that um this, this year. So um before we just move on to the remembrance concert, I don't know whether anyone's got any questions in terms of the parade and the event.
I think the other shot of it is, for what it was at that meeting, essentially, we're gonna have to look at um the RBL just doing the parade piece and having no other responsibility. So all they're gonna do is say quick march and get everybody up there and make sure the flags dip. They're just gonna make sure people are in the right place, and that's, that's their responsibility. And actually, that's quite a lot for them to do. So, you know, the rest of it is ours. The thing that does still concern me is the um is the song sheets, because you stuck on a six hundred and fifty number, and I know that they come from the funeral directors.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not within our gift, but like, it does bother me that they can't seem to move beyond that. And it doesn't matter how many people are, it are six hundred and fifty is the number. So I, I think we need to re-attack that at some point, but not just yet perhaps.
Well, one of the things we're trying to do is formalise, and Matt's done a lot of work with that, most of the work, probably all of it. But um formalise the process of what we do, so that when we're no longer here as councillors, the next lot can come along and go. That's what you do. Um, because it's one of the things that we all feel, I think, is important, we, we keep. It's one of the biggest events we have to attend at the beginning, barring Christmas. Uh, and I think it's very important that we, we continue to do that and having the process in place as, as a, a process that we do, I think is, is the right way forward.
Yeah, and that, that's sort of just one other thing, that includes all the civic responsibilities and who, who gets invited, how the information gets out to them, so they know where to be, what to do, who's in charge of it. Because at the moment, we're just hoping that the RBL have got that right, and it, and it hasn't always worked. So they were a bit reluctant to let that go a little bit, but.
I think we'll probably take the donkey's share of that now, because if the club isn't operating as an RBL club, are they gonna be welcoming them?
Yeah, the other thing that we talked about, which again is, is, is borne out of people's complaints, if you like. If you happen to be second, third, fourth, fifth row back, you cannot see the Reverend. And he is a very important integral part of the whole service, so uh we're gonna try and raise him up so people can see.
I think we've saved you, we can't do miracles.
Chris, the ban chair, we'll have to borrow it for the day.
Well, at least this year, we've, if you're not seeing, you will hear it.
Yeah.
I think he has to be seen.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
So if everybody's happy, we move on to the Remembrance Concert, which will take place on eighth of November, on the Friday before the Sunday. Again, um, we haven't had a Remembrance Concert, they, it is again, their event, we've traditionally given the venue for free. We have um paid for the brass band um on, on all of the occasions that have been delivered. But we have no control over how the concert is structured. So again, uh, we did mention to them that actually one of the, one of the reasons why attendance was diminishing was because it's very samey. I mean, it, you know, the order of service, the, the song, you know, the hymn songs that they, they did never changed from year on year. So again, we're gonna take a lot more control over that and we're gonna have a more um commemorative one half of the event, and after the interval, then we can have the sort of, you know, the prom star type event where people are getting a little bit more vibrant and flag waving and all the rest of it. We have um, we have booked the brass band already, it is five hundred pounds. Um, I mean, the last time we had a Remembrance Concert must have been about four years ago and it was three hundred and sixty pounds then, so costs have gone up. But we have booked them because they're in demand. Um, and again, the uh, the conductor um is very uh amiable to talk about how to structure the event uh and change um, change it up a bit. So again, it, it is what it is, it's.
We're also looking at possibly getting schools to pop for choir. Because that would mainly put you at a teenager's age because the parents will come and see their, their children.
So the other thing to agree is, again, traditionally, um, tickets are sold for the event. But all the income from the ticket sales are donated to the poppy fund. And if council are happy to do that, then we will continue to do that.
I guess we've got a budget.
Sensible to me.
Yeah. Do they coordinate the raffle?
Um, yeah, they said they'll do the raffle. I'll offer them the pro, uh, the price.
We do get some income, we get an income off the bar.
Donations are well.
That's it.
And the good thing is, you know, in the past, um, to be honest, they have encouraged people to leave it, to leave virtually straight after the event to uh, to go to the Royal British Legion, but that's not gonna happen this year.
Okay, is that, everything on there? That was just no, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so. So eighty-six point four, appointing a volunteer civic support team.
So we have talked about this in the past, uh, and um, I'll be honest, we, we have been sowing in terms of graft in hold of this and, and making any progress. Um, however, it's got to the point now where um the town team are getting busier. Um, they're doing a lot of really good uh productive work. And the current incumbent of the sword bearer and mace bearer's role are two members of that team. And um, and actually, you know, it's me that said to Nick, we can't afford to take up their time, which then will impact on, on the work of the town team through having loo time um as a result of that. So I think we need to go out, we need to advertise, we need to try and recruit um a sword bearer and a mace bearer and a town crier, because since Harry has resigned, uh, due to the fact that he's getting to an age where he's taking exams, et cetera, he just couldn't afford the time to continue. So again, um, you know, we were grateful to Mike to come and do the D-Day, but we need to try and find someone who can step into the, into that role as well. I'm sure that um, there, there, there are not many events, but they, they are events that are really important to us. So I'm sure there are people out there that could um, that would want to do it on a voluntary basis. But I think we should go a stage further and also progress the idea of our heritage ambassadors. We have a group of people, as you saw at D-Day, that do help us with some of the educational stuff that we do. But there are other times when we need people, um, for instance, heritage open days in September. We usually uh display the regalia, uh, the Guildhall uh has taken more of a heritage uh theme. Um, so there's times when um people who have an interest and a passion for the town's heritage can come and work and support and help those things. So I think what we need to do is a nice press release about, you know, what we're doing in terms of our heritage, uh, how we're trying to develop it and call on people to come forward and uh, and involved, and hopefully we can recruit, train and nurture those people to take those vital roles that also heritage ambassadorial role as well. I don't know what your comments are in terms of that.
Anyone got any comments on that?
I think it's a really good idea, I think it's a long time ago, I'm really honest, we need to formalise it. And um having people who are dedicated to it and un- understand the, the history that the town's got, I think it's essential. You know, the, the town staff have done a brilliant job over the years, but it does completely tie them up away from other duties when normally we're really busy at those times, you know, on the big events, so it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would agree, sorry, but I don't think.
I was gonna say, I totally agree, I think um the more volunteers we can recruit and teach and, and train and, and make aware of the heritage, the better. That's how you preserve traditions, not only keep perpetuate them by getting younger people, more people involved in it to replace ones that are currently tied up with it, which is quite onerous on them, if there's always the same ones of the age, we're gonna need replacements to perpetuate those traditions. Um, but by passing up that information, they've almost become ambassadors of the heritage themselves, perpetuating the knowledge of the local traditions, et cetera. I think that's fundamental, that's how you, you, you keep the traditions and knowledge alive basically. Uh, so I think it's a really good idea, um, I think it's about recruiting right people, people that is keen to do something for the town, but is also keen on the heritage element of passing my knowledge about local issues.
I think in terms of um the sword and mace bearer, the sooner we do it, the better, because probably the biggest event that will come up reasonably quickly will be the Remembrance Parade, and they will take a vital part in that. It's the, it's the role of the town crier that's not gonna be as easy. Um, uh, Harry came about because um he was almost nurtured by Mike when Mike was the previous town crier. And again, um, perhaps uh committee that we could get an official letter to Mike, signed by the mayor to uh request that he helps us um in terms of trying to find someone who can do that and actually take the time, if, if you like, to try and train that person. Because honestly, uh, when he did the proclamation, I don't think Katie, for instance, who does a lot of the theatrical stuff that we do. Um, when she um, when Mike gave the proclamation on D-Day, she came to me and said, my God, he's good. And, you know, she can be very critical performances at times, she did say he was good. So we can play it either two ways, we could actually ask Mike whether he could fill the breach for a bit um and help us. No, but the problem with Mike is, um, he's, these are, remembrance is, is celebrated across the area and he's got commitments already, so. But I think we could possibly reach out and ask him for his help and see whether he could.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. The town crier's run that, that concerns me the most, the mace bearer, I think, I'm not, don't wanna belittle it because it's quite good, but the, the town crier was specialist, yeah. And Mike was, was brilliant, I spoke to him on the day, and he won't come back to Vepford because basically his words were, I'm not gonna be sharted again. And I think that's a unfortunate thing to have happened. Uh, obviously, we wasn't involved in that, and I, I don't know where that came from. Got my belief, but hey, you know, that's bridge under, that's walk under the bridge. But as far as the town crier goes, going forward, we may have to look at a professional town crier in. a professional town crier to cover events like that because it's going to be hard to find a town crier.
Yeah, it's not about someone just standing on a, on a platform and shout. There's a skill to it and I think, just to put a little bit of context around that. I know Mike, when Mike was town crier, one of the things that upset him was he didn't think the council was taking the heritage role seriously. And basically, as a counter, we called on, you know, for a couple of occasions a year. There is an opportunity now to really take hold of our heritage and, and we will need these kind of people a lot more often. And I think if Mike was joining the town council as a town crier now, I think it would be a completely different situation, but as you say.
Just one quick thing, I agree with this. I mean, it was unfortunate, I felt quite sorry for the lad who was doing the, not the sword, the other thing.
The mace bearer.
And to try to help her when he'd done.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, you know, it's, yes, it's a good, good get for the years.
Yeah, the heritage ambassadors, I think, make perfect sense. We already have the conservation group volunteers, we already now have the Ian Bloom volunteers. And if the council's serious about heritage, then it makes perfect sense to get a team and we should be paying for some training for them around things like first aid, mani handling, and also some sort of basic heritage training to help educate them. I'm not sure if I completely like the title of heritage ambassador, but you know, working title, can't accept better. The one I have a bit more of an issue with is the role of sword bearer, mace bearer and town crier. We will not get a town crier for free. You know, it is a profession and, you know, have to, have to acknowledge that. And I also don't think it's right to expect somebody to be the mace bearer and sword bearer for free either. You know, we are the third oldest minority in the country. I really hope the council moving forward will be much more focused on civic and twinning. And I'm perfectly happy for us to pay for a sword bearer and a mace bearer. You know, it's, it's a professional job, there is a mace bearers guild and all the rest of it. And I think actually it's a huge responsibility holding that sword and that mace. They are, you know, frankly, antiques and historical significance. And, you know, I think we should be budgeting and we should be prepared to pay somebody to do those roles.
I'm glad you said there's a guild because I was going to mention that as well. That's really important and it's all part of the thing. What I would say on the town crier note, and I did speak to Mike about this, there's been, there is and it has been an increase in the amount of town criers across the country. And so every town crier starts off somewhere. You know, they don't just have always been a town crier. You, you can become one, you can go through training and you can be part of their guild and then go to events and follow others. So we can do it, but you have got to incentivize people to do it. And the other thing about town criers is although they might be Tethford's town crier, they are marketable elsewhere. So they might take their role and their livery and deliver things elsewhere to earn other money off the back of that. So what I would say is twofold. Firstly, we can advertise and it could be somebody absolutely fresh and we could train and see that through. But what we've got to realize is not only is there a slight cost to us, but we would also have allow that to be out marketed somewhat. Because otherwise, I'm missing where Mike got upset. You know, he was limited in what he could do. You can make money out of that.
So, so do we want to say we would like to recruit, whatever it's called, heritage ambassadors or whatever we're going to call them as volunteers, but then separately we'll advertise for a town crier, mace bearer and what's the other one? Sword?
Sword bearer.
So that would be two different things, yeah?
Yeah.
So do we need, do we need a proposal and second for that?
Market a pose.
Yes, yeah. And Carla's second. So we'll go ahead with that, recruiting heritage ambassadors or whatever we're going to call them, yeah?
I think we need to have a look at sort of, how are we going to recommend them? You can't just get like a nice £40,000 a year job and.
Most of them are freelance, you know, they're self-employed and it's a freelance role. So just need to give that some thought. I assume you can just get into the budgets here, wouldn't you?
Carla. I agree with all points this way, I second that. I think it is quite tricky with the crier. It requires a certain personnel and a keen interest in that, it's a very particular role. And I think finding a right candidate is key. We can certainly, as a council, advertise and then I put word out for anyone who knows anything, but anyone that is interested in this sort of thing. But I just think it's fundamental for us to have a conversation with the current town crier with Mike, for him to take it almost as an apprentice. So have somebody that he can shadow and learn from and have somebody, you know, growing sign to bring that experience and that, and that footing before they take the role full time. Obviously, they're going to need to be registered. And yes, they will probably do jobs in other locations because it is a job that's paid. But I think it's a learning, it's a, it's a process, not something that you get trained and doing induction two weeks and you become a town crier. It is a long term sort of a learning experience and I think you need to learn from, from shadowing somebody. So I think talking to Mike about it and having him on board to be a sort of a mentor is fundamental.
Just another thing, I mean, I think there's an opportunity with that because when you, when you recruit somebody, you might remember a few years ago we had a town criers event. And I think it was just after the, the new area was built on my boot. So we had that and we had town criers from all across the region. You know, some of them come quite a long distance and they have this competition. So, you know, by doing that, that actually, that brings a bit of a focus on this and we're doing it because we're the oldest minority and all that, that I think. That might in fact help attract, it might be the start off.
I think that's a spot on, it's a really good idea to attract the talent of anybody who's interested, like putting on that event and advertising quite well. Anybody that sees them doing it in against themselves in their shoes. So those are key not doing something like that, they might be a bit reluctant to join our approaches. They are more likely to take on, you know, putting themselves down to do it or becoming an apprentice and that sort of thing if they actually see them as a display. So putting on an event will probably work as an attraction point for talent in that sort of, which is very specific. It's an idea anyways that we can look into.
There's, there's an old, an RSM's competition in the army that we used to attend. And what we would do is they would, they would encourage people to come forward and, and say a particular phrase and they would check it for clarity and volume.
Right.
That's a triage for talent.
But actually, you could have a public event coming on, you could have children doing it. Go, see where you came on the ladder. So you could build quite an event out of something that we're trying to.
It could, it could very well turn that into a competition, a fun environment event for all the community and then just kind of, almost we use it as to spot talent, you know?
I think the mayor has to go first.
Absolutely. But shall we move on? We're going to move on to 87.24, which is Civic Pride Awards. That's to discuss a proposal to develop and deliver a town council driven annual civic pride awards. We do need an imprinciple decision tonight as to whether to have an annual civic pride award ceremony. If, if we're going to proceed, then we need to set out timing for number of awards. So I think we're saying rather than be part of the town, what, what they call them? That's it. But because if we're going to get lots of people volunteering for us, that maybe we can do a separate award for them, they'd be part of that.
I'm going to be pedantic now, but when you read this through, it said the mayor presented to the greed.
I just saw that, I thought.
It doesn't say agreed, it doesn't look well on character, does it?
The mayor presented to the greed reception. I thought it meant something.
It says agreed, yeah, which looks a bit bad. It should be agreed, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
No, I'll be quiet for a minute.
Apostrophe G all over again.
It is, yeah. Where's Mr Rindell? Going to this civic awards, are we in danger of becoming overwhelmed? We have the Tara's, we can have ours, we have our, what's it called, citizen person.
Yeah, so my, my thoughts, and if that catches up, that display on the TV, there's, there should be a graphic there that actually shows pictures of all the volunteers that are currently doing conservation work, you know, litter picking, street cleaning, things like that already. I mean, there's a plethora of people already involved with the council. This is something where the honorary citizens award just hasn't caught, it just hasn't engaged. Probably, Chris, because you're right, there are the business community awards, there's the Tara's, there's other small activities that recognize people. But this, this is, let's, you know, we have talked about the honorary citizens award being a bit pompous, et cetera, and outdated maybe. You know, we are developing a really good team of volunteers doing loads of good work. So some, this is more, a bit more low key in terms of going out to be nominated, although we could still do that. This is us recognizing all these people who actually are helping us and will help us more in the future if we develop this ambassadors, heritage ambassador scheme. Then again, they would join in with those, with that pictorial evidence that you can see on the screen. So, so it could, it could, it could take two routes really. We could, we could have a big occasion and, and, but I think, yeah, we're, we're on the overkill. So I think this is something that the committee or the council vote to recognize the people who are working with us. So it's, it's more in-house, if you like. Yeah, sorry.
I was going to say, my first instinct when, when looking through this, I'm welcome more context or opinions, but it just seems like a whole other award thing, seems a bit much to me. I'm sort of in the way you described it there, it sounded like what we're, we're talking about. It's almost a thank you party, to say a phrase to everyone, in which case, do we need an award relevant to it? Is it not just a please come in and say thank you kind of thing? In which case, we could do something, I think, a bit more, I don't know, a bit more fallbacks, more a sort of gratitude event, that's my thing. If, if we're going for an award, I think partnering with other existing awards makes sense, but if we're wanting a gratitude thing, I think this doesn't seem quite right, but it seems like it's got possibilities if that makes sense.
Civic awards, the civic pride award was, was just a working title really. I mean, Alan and I have spoken about it, we, we didn't, you know, we, we talked about it, we didn't like the idea in terms of the title. But I think, you know, there's some really, really good people. I mean, they, you know, they get a lot of stick as well because they're public facing, you know? Some people criticize the fact that why are you doing it when, you know, all of that kind of stuff. But still, they come week in, week out to help, you know, brighten the town up and, and stuff like that. I think it's really important when you've got volunteers on board that you do.
I just heard about, we should, we need to make sure we, like, show our gratitude in a way. I mean, that just sounds, I'm not really on social media, but I try to make sure I comment whenever I see people on social media because it's important, I'm just not quite sure this fits.
A couple of points. I am, and I know you didn't mean it like this, but I have a slight irk at the word pompous being used for honorary citizens because I was actually really proud to be involved in that and, and I was one of the people who objected to having it involved in the Tara's. I thought it should be something we absolutely have on our own, our own thing and really shout about. Also because, you know, my person won. Outside of that, that's irrelevant. All I just see with something like this, it just reminds me of the fiasco that we had though with trying to do the, the honorary citizens award. And I remember all sitting at a table in King's House, spending ages trying to work the logistics of organizing it out. We had to delegate it to go into the Tara's because we needed to latch on to someone else's event to, to help us or something like this. I just think there's too much else going on, that we're stepping on other people's toes. And not to criticize the people who do an incredible job, but most of these events are filled by councillors who turn up and put a hives on and help these people as well. I think, I think there's a large amount of councillors who go to these things and help. So I think if we're going to award these people a certificate, a badge, a heartfelt thank you with something attached, I don't think it needs to be something so formal and when we did the, like, what was it called? The litter pick that happened recently. Not I came to, it's been clean. The spring clean. We handed out certificates, something like that, I think, or badges, you know, working things like that that they give to people. I just think it's a bit much to do something so formal and council driven when it's just basically a really big thank you we need to hand out.
Yeah.
I hate what you're saying, I hate what you're saying. I don't think we need to have another award ceremony. You're just picking one person out of 20, 30, 40 people and, and it does seem a little bit, you have to pay that by tickets to go, I think. I, I think an informal invitation, to the car, maybe, a little bit of spread and, and, and just officially thank them. I think they'd be really pleased with that, that's, you know, they don't want recognition. But just to say thank you formally, I think is a great idea. But I don't think we need a full on award ceremony.
So are we happier then with just having, I think Doug said like a thank you party or something rather than, yeah?
I was just. I was just wondering if there's an opportunity to thank them at another event. So we, we've had the mayor's civic reception, these are the people who do stuff for the town, they're passionate about the town, why not have them, they're able to speak to the other chains and people outside. You know, and if there's too many of them, why not have a select few? And actually, we could get them all together and say, first of all, thank you to all our volunteers, they do great work. And then we tie two things into one event. Is that something we could do perhaps?
Yeah, Carla.
I, I agree, I don't think we need a specific words. And I think pulling out one name out of a, a group that goes out every week to do the same job is almost like a pinpoint and it kind of excludes the other ones, I think it's a bit, it's a bit limiting. I particularly like the idea of a thank you present of some sort, either on its own or attached to some other event, as you mentioned. I think something that once a year in, in the sorts of maybe letter of acknowledgement for time served as a volunteer to the town would be a nice thing, polite thing to do because people don't want to be recognized publicly, but they might want a personal recognition themselves to say, look, at least they acknowledged my work and they, they appreciate of some sorts. So maybe a little letter of reference or a little thank you note that goes out to the volunteers once a year. And if we put that thank you party on, I think it's nothing more appropriate than, than Volunteers Week or Volunteers Awareness Week, which is once, once a year. That's specifically, that's why we, you know, celebrate it's Volunteers Week. And put the thank you event on that week as a way to, to thank all the town volunteers and the town council volunteers on that, on that date, which is for them basically. Just to stress in English for this.
Yeah, I was following on from Carla, there is a National Volunteers Week, it's in June every year. It was literally last week.
Yes.
So, you know, Charles Barrow, we, we normally all glance like a little lunch or something for the volunteers just to meet up and have a couple of chats and, you know, a chance for somebody to say, you know, thank you and well done. And so I definitely think June next year is part of Volunteers Week, we should do something. And I think actually that would be the right time to do it because actually our volunteer base is growing significantly and, which is great because people feel they want to get involved with the town council, they recognize we're, we're doing, doing stuff. So let's, you know, work towards that. I think having the new uniform actually is probably more important than, than anything. They feel part of the team.
They think of the ship, yeah.
And, you know, the regular thank yous and updates and that sort of thing. So let's build towards it in that style.
Okay.
Just as a side note, I, last year, I put forward seven or eight people from our town for Breckland Special Recognition Award and they got this certificate, the little badge. Now, that would be quite useful, I don't know if you see that, but that's what it looks like.
A national letter, a badge or a certificate or something.
Something about that formula, a little bit of a charm in a frame. They get a little badge, you can see with a little leaf on it, just there.
I'm actually quite pleased with my glasses.
But it was quite nice, you know, you could do, do something like that with a certificate.
It has got to be like a massive thing, it's good to be afternoon too. To, they don't know when it boots out and they'll be acting about afternoon too.
We'll work towards something next, next June, yeah?
So I was thinking of doing something myself anyway for town citizens.
So we'll work towards next June on Volunteers Week and sort something. So we don't, do we need to? No, we're not, we're not going to do that, right, okay. All right, so we'll move on to 88.24. Decision making framework for the planning and delivery of town events. Um, Decision Making Framework for the Planning and Delivery of Town Events. Is this the?
Yeah, so um, I must admit, uh, on the presentation pack is my waffle. Uh, and then um, Terry, uh, I think sent a paper through yesterday, this morning. Um, so this is, uh, I think it's been sent around, but if you haven't got a copy of it, just, um, and actually, to be honest, it, it makes it more succinct and to the point. And um, it's probably better to discuss and work through than some of the waffle that I wanted to, to do myself. What I did do, um, what I did do on the back of that, Terry, is um actually try and take those points out of your document to try and put it, again, it's this round, just put it into something that we could develop as almost um a live document. So cover all of those points within your framework, which covers the areas of approval, uh, reporting, evaluating and deep brief, et cetera. Um, that can, that's just, you know, working document as, as the first one is. So really, it's just some thoughts around. I mean, those documents can be produced for each event type. And as soon as we get the um, Bremling sorted in terms of our SharePoint Hub, uh, that doc, that document can be a live document that sits on SharePoint Hub. So the council can dip in and see where we are in terms of progress um on, on that. Um, but again, it, it could be the basis of, instead of getting this, which just gives you the financials, you will get this at each meeting that will um, that will cover all the aspects of we develop, deliver, review, the events going forward. And I'm sure there's some tweaks on that, but I just tried to pick out some of your thoughts on the, uh, on the, on the paper.
Do you want?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy with this. I think it's got on, to be honest with you. I think the, I speak for myself, but I think others share the frustration that um, we don't always know as councillors about some of the events coming up. And I'm, you know, so fed up with people saying to me, oh, this is coming up, what's that all about? And I say, I really don't know, I'm really sorry. Or I look on Facebook and I'm like, oh, there's a poster, what's this about? Um, and, you know, we've got to tighten up on some of that. Um, the, the most important one for me personally is the communications plan, because we're starting to put on some really good events now. The D-Day event particularly was a really good event. Um, and for an, an event of that size, you've got to have a comms plan, you know, it's very last minute. And I, you know, took, took an effective decision to put bits and pieces in um the back of the magazine to make sure there was an audience. And I think it worked, because you can't just rely on social media, you've got to have a mixture of uh, different things. We're making really good use now of the rotunda and the poster boards, and we're building up the e-newsletter, and we've got the two digital newsletters. So just mapping out when we need to do stuff um, and who's going to do it and how much it's going to cost for, for all of the events is really important, which is why the comms plan is so key. Um, and it's just about putting a framework in place. So that's, you know, it's not about creating loads of work, and it's about just putting it all together in a framework, which the document I circulated this morning and together with what you've produced, David, I think is exactly the right direction.
The, the good thing to add to that is it's not just about using the poster site, uh, poster sites better, but just today, Alona has been tasked with the job of making sure that she distributes flyers to various different outlets. And she did her town centre walk around with a, a bunch of flyers. And actually, she came back and was quite chuffed that um, the reception for a lot of the, the, the shops and businesses was a lot more personable and amenable to, to, to taking them in, in the past. It's, it's not been like that. So I think people are looking and seeing some of the events that we're doing and thinking it's worth getting involved. And some of them are benefiting uh, from the fact that we're doing more events. Um, so, but again, that's got eight lines. It could have twenty-eight, it could have a hundred and eight. That would just grow as, as our distribution list is, is identified and listed. But again, you will see where we have delivered those exhibits and flyers on this living document for each event, so.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, can I say thanks to um Terry and, and they thanked us, put work in this, that was very quick, because we're sending this one out, it looked really good. I just back up the point of that, like, we really like the idea as well of not only just the comms plan, but also making it very clear to all councillors, so we know what's going on, because let's face it, we're all in the honourary community, so we can start passing this along as well. So we're, we're a comms planner in itself. So I just think that's really important to make sure we do.
I'm, I'm following that. One of the things I have, like, when I first started this, was events were planned and we had actually no input. We didn't know what was going on. Um, we quite often put forward ideas and never moved. And it does seem to be moving better now. Uh, and I think that's where it is, because if we're the events committee for the town, we should at least have a major input on that. I don't know if everyone agrees with that, one more. But we should have a major input on that. Uh, obviously, we don't deliver it. We've got a really good team delivering it. Uh, but it should be all connected and, and we should be fully in the loop of what's going on. And this gives us that power.
Good.
Or, no, information, sorry, power is the wrong word.
Carla, did you want to say something?
Um, yes, only on one big comment. I agree. In, in light of that, um, I just want to say good some of the councillors I mentioned informally, um, that I am intending to put an event in town, a cultural event in twenty-five. We had to determine the date. We are looking to Riverside, but because there might be food involved and other things, might come across other parts of the town. And this is something we're going to put through to, obviously, um, to ask for licensing and all that, you know, to find the council. So because still on the idea, it's not, still working on the planning of it before, you know, if I'm letting people know formally. Um, I didn't mention it earlier, I wanted to have something more, you know, structured to present um before getting to that stage. But I think it's good to give the heads up, because twenty-five, you know, things we organise, things we do one year in advance. Um, and it's not that long to go, to be honest. Um, just to give you guys an, an idea of what it'd look like, is something, it would have similar points to the Ponchar Festival. They're very cultural, they're very unique in their way they present their culture and their event and their festival. What we tend to do is do something more broad and actually have an element of the different um cultures. Not only the migrant communities, have an element of Poshkis culture, Posh culture and et cetera, being in those elements to a single event, a single festival, like a multicultural approach thing. But also have um some presentation, have some elements of the actual residents here, like the Londoners over Spur, having some elements of music and, and knowledge about who came from where and how they came to be part of that as a whole. Um, so this is something that we're still working out. Uh, we'll have something more defined soon, as also we work out what time of year this will take place and where. Um, but this gives us a heads up that once I have something like a draft to present and, and ask for licensing and everything that goes with it. Um, I obviously, I want to incorporate the council. This is going to be a, a big event and I want to make it as successful as possible and attract the most people to the town, showcase something, showcase the town. Um, and, and, you know, being as a head of the council in their respect and having that link with those cultures and those communities is a really good opportunity to bring not only the locals from those communities belonging here, but also the town. Because I know that these innovative events happen in other locations and they're really lots of it. There's people coming from all sorts of towns and locations just to attend this particular event, especially if there's music and food and everything that brings people together. So in order to make it as best as possible, actually I'm gonna ask for the, you know, the corporate support of the council. Um, not necessarily funding, so it's longer worried. Because this is something that part, will be partially funded by um the Poshkis government, because there will be an element of Poshkis culture into it. So there are, there are little pockets, not, not the whole event, we'll be covered, but the little pockets of funding will support when the event on. Um, and this is how we're going to approach it. Obviously, I will put a proposal to the council to have the involvement of the council, not only for the ancillary services, with organising it and logistics of it, and it runs well and the flow of people goes well without any hiccups. Um, but also when it comes to, you know, the dates and everything, so it doesn't collide without things going on. Okay, this is just the preview. I will certainly put something a bit more defined on paper and work with the committee after, anyways.
The proposal, second. Most of the things that we just need to um discuss and prove the attached framework and.
Right.
Yeah.
So we just, so we're happy, so we just need to approve the framework, yeah?
Terry.
We, a.
This version, okay.
Yeah. Do you need a proposal, second? And? Yeah. Right, eighty-nine, twenty-four, town events, an update on delivered and planned events.
Okay, so again, um, the financial pages, if you look at the, the whole page, it gives you um state's report on where we are in terms of some of the events. So we've delivered uh, the first of the big, the big four, which was the Witsen, and also the first of our marketplace events, which was the first Friday Night Live on the thirty-first of May. Um, the Witsen event was not as nice a weather as it was last year. It was a heatwave last year. This was a little bit more inconsistent, a bit more variable. But um, I think as the weekend progressed, there was more and more people came down. And then it was still busy, um, and people seemed to enjoy it. One of the criticisms uh, of our aspect of it last year was although the continental market was here for four days, we didn't have enough activity that went across those four days. So this year, we put some family activities on the Sunday and Monday, which were uh, last year, the dead days, if you like. Um, and again, you know, if it hadn't have been for the poor weather, I think they would have been really uh, much more well-attended. Although, we did have a steady flow of people that came down. There was over twenty-odd activities for people to come down and enjoy. Um, and I think certainly on the Monday, people did come down and, and, and participate. So um, we did try. We can't uh, control the weather, but I think what we did was um definitely um well-received by those people who did make the effort. The first Friday night was again, the following Friday, and again, the weather was a little bit inconsistent. Um, I did feel for the vendors, they all turned up. Um, there wasn't as much of a footfall. In fact, people came down and said what they, what they had on offer was good, but they just couldn't um, couldn't wear the cold for longer than half an hour. But they did say that they weren't going to be put off and they'll be back again. And our next one is uh, next Friday, Friday the twenty-first. And then we have another one on the twelfth of July and the second of August. The second of August, we will also um have some of the family events uh, that were delivered on that Sunday and Monday of Witsen. Uh, so that will be a really big one, but we've done that at that particular event, simply because, fingers crossed, we're hoping in August, we're going to have better weather and more people enjoy it. Um, I think in terms of the Witsen event, one of the things that was successful is I didn't have any complaints at all about bins overflowing or, or, or rubbish and stuff like that. So I think our relationship with Breckland Waste has paid off. And uh, and I think we're, we're both working together to make sure that in terms of the litter and the waste, uh, it works really well for a big event like that. So I don't know whether there's any um, some questions at the moment.
Sorry, very good, I'm gonna be mine one for me, because um, the Tiger Events for the two days was eight hundred pounds uh, coming up on the second ball, because it's two hundred pounds. Was that just a time?
Well, because uh, they were there for uh, the whole day.
Just around length.
And the evening is just a few hours, um, rather than a full day or full three days.
The next one coming up, will it be the same things? Because I, I, I attended with my kids and I, I think they love to go cards, but sort of, I'm not sure the rest of it was that much.
Well, we can, we can, we can have a conversation with um, we can have a conversation with Tiger Events and make sure that we can get some different uh, events. I know uh, on one of the um, summer events, we've got some mini golf and things like that. So it's got lots of different activities. So what we need to do is just have a conversation and try and.
I think some of those more, sort of bigger things would be more of a draw, because a lot of them were.
Also, what you will say, when it was too small or things like that, I'm quite sure that had impact, I know whether it was against us, but uh. Well, you know, there'll be times when, you know, we can, we can get the sand cut open as well, uh, as the, as the uh, season progresses. Uh, we've got a big vinyl that will go over it, so we aren't going to keep taking the wood on and, and off. Um, and also, we have a vinyl that will have the snakes and ladders, the five-by-five meter snakes and ladders with furry dice and markers and things. So there's plenty of things that we can put out there that they can do. So um, yeah, I take your point. It probably was a little bit too old for some of the children. Um, the other thing to just uh, reiterate, just going back to the previous bit about um, event planning and some consistency. There are two upcoming events that are going to be on the marketplace. So uh, the Friday night is for the twenty-first. And uh, Alona's um, just gonna give a carbing sale on a Sunday, a bit of a try to see whether we can generate some income off some of these marketplace events as well. But one thing, one thing that um screams out to me and we have to look at as a committee and as a uh, comms um consideration, is it does have the badge at the top. It does have the fact it's set for town council, but I think we need to try and, and I know Hazel, the comms officer, is working um, on some more um consistent uh, guidelines, branding guidelines. So there's a couple of occasions where, I must admit, um, the first one, I wasn't very happy with the, with the Friday Night Live. It looked, it did look something a little bit too cartoony to me. As a town council, yes, you've got to try and attract the right kind of attendance. But I think there needs to be some kind of branded guidelines that we, we, uh, we, we move forward with. So that's something we'll be working on, bringing back to committee or to corporate services.
It kind of relates, and it's sort of a practical point, but um, I think it comes up with the, the, the town magazine, that a, a photo bank. I know we've got, we get lots of photos, but it feels like we don't have a, a full photo bank of some of the wonderful things that we're putting on, which I think would be really helpful, because then straight away we can have that straight into the show activities that make it enticing. Um, forgive me, I'm not sure where that even sits, um, it would in the town council team. But if we can look at making sure we have a photo bank, that probably be made this process a lot smoother.
That is part of the comms uh, officers remit. Okay, so comms has been moved to corporate services, so that will take place there. But it is something that we've spoken about. We do need to make sure we have a better photo archive.
Good, let's move back to the, I couldn't, we had to cut the event in Gilmour Craft Market. Yeah. How did that go down with, with the stall holders? Because I come in and.
It was, but uh, again, um, it's a case of the weather was not great, there wasn't a lot of footfall around. If you don't get footfall onto the market, it's a hard place to, to, to pull people in. Um, again, I think we need to look at how, you know, maybe we have a presence on the market square ourselves. So when officers are on duty, they're actually out there encouraging people what to do and what's on, rather than set up and, and, and almost, you know, just try and facilitate the event on a health and safety aspects as well. You've got to be ongoing promotion.
Because same, you, they got the board and, and it's bad. And I, I don't know, I'm assuming they pay for the store.
They do pay for their stores. Uh, uh, however, um, craft, craft stalls holders are notoriously, um, well, they give you really, you know, really good feedback in terms of if they don't get the footfall. We didn't have that from them, so they must have been happy with what they take. But having said that, um, yeah, I go to craft stalls when I go out and about and very rarely see a happy one. Not.
Okay.
So, you know, but um.
Immudically.
You made Jan twenty-five.
We just, we just need to note that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. So uh, moving on to ninety, twenty-four, partnership and third-party events.
So again, there's um, just some uh, updates in terms of um, some of the um, marketplace partner events that we're, we're working with. This Sunday, we've got, we're working in partnership with the environmental group uh, to deliver the Big Green Fair. Um, and uh, hopefully that will be a really good event for them. It's um, the plans and the, and the stall holders they've got attending. It's um, yeah, I think it's going to be a really good day, as long as the weather holds. So that runs on the market square from eleven till three. Uh, and then we have been talking to Norfolk Family and Community Team uh, to try and deliver uh, within the school holidays on Thursday, the first of August, um, an activity day on the marketplace. So there's lots of different. Um, an activity day on the marketplace. So there's lots of different uh organizations and groups that will be uh coming and pitching up. One to try and engage with families about some of the uh options of support that they provide, but also just to give people a really good time um at no cost, basically. Um, although we will be doing some um beverages and food within the tea room. So if people want a tea and coffee and a bit of cake, we'll be able to do that on that particular day. But again, we're working really well with them and hopefully that will be another really good event. The third one that you see on the uh, on the update is um the screen on the green, although I don't think Breton, who are a partner i- in that particular event, um like that idea, but that's the way I just termed the event. Um, so we have got together um to deliver uh two days of cinema, outdoor cinema on the green as they have done in previous years. Uh, but we're trying to uh add a little bit of value to it. So prior, leading up to that week in the Carnegie, we are hosting and delivering some um theatre workshops. So again, there's going to be two films on each day and between the films, there's going to be a little bit of entertainment where these kids can get their opportunity to get up on that sort of concrete stage-like steps and give a bit of a performance to hopefully several hundred people. So it gives them a bit of a spotlight. Um, but it also uh allows us to um get the second film ready for delivery. So um I don't know whether you've got any uh, any questions on, on that.
Yeah, carry.
Um, uh, at what point did councillors approve the spending of four thousand pounds of town council money for this event?
So I haven't spoken four thousand pounds. Um, so if I uh just hand these out, it gives you a bit of a breakdown on the costs. So actually, um, we did have four thousand pounds in the uh partnership uh fund um to deliver um some partnership events, of which this one was one of the ones that was suggested. Um, actually, Breton have committed seven thousand, so collectively we did have eleven thousand pounds if we used to use um the fall. But uh you can see the expenditure today. So actually, of the eight thousand pounds, we've only spent a thousand pounds of our four thousand pounds. Uh, the agreement between the two parties, um and this is why I think we justify only having to commit a thousand pounds to it, is because we will be the main facilitator of the event. Breton will do some of the risk assessments. They will do um the event plan. They will do sort of admin type uh functions that you would expect them to have um more uh staff and and sway over. What we will do is we will actually be the boots on the ground on the third and fourth of August to deliver, so support delivery of it. So we are, in my opinion, doing the lion's share of it. So um.
My, my point is that it's a big event. It's a high-profile event. Um, and there's been absolutely no councillor oversight or approval for it. That's my frustration. And I don't doubt that we would have supported it, but there's got to be a process in place for agreeing these things. Um, Doug's not here now, but um uh he emailed me about this a couple of weeks ago because he found out um by virtue of being a trustee of the Charles Borough Museum, we shouldn't be put in positions as councillors where other organizations are telling us what the town council is doing.
I agree, and hopefully this process will, will solve that. Uh, and going forward, you know, we will go through uh the procedures that we've now adopted. Um yeah, traditionally, it's a case of, in the past, budgets have been set and offices have been delegated to deliver. Yeah, as long as we don't go over budget, um we've had that responsibility. Really, the councillors want more involvement in that, and we're happy to provide that. And going forward, the new procedures will allow that.
No, thank you. Um, just on the marketing, um, I, I'm really pleased we're working in partnership with Breton. I think it's a really positive step. They've got an established activity with Screen on the Green and uh the stage stuff. Um, do make sure town council has oversight of the marketing. The danger is we're essentially providing an event which Breton will get the kudos for. We're putting money and staff time in. It will be seen as a Breton event because they have delivered it for the last however many years as a solely Breton-only event. Um, and uh they will market it because they're professional comms team at Breton. They will market it as a Breton achievement. And my ask is that we make sure the town council gets recognition for our part in it.
So the marketing um process or or what's actually going to happen hasn't been agreed yet. So we have an opportunity to make sure that councillors do have an input into that. So my request to Breton would be that the commerce plan needs to be put together now and and that will be circulated uh because um our next meeting is not until the tenth of July, which you would think that we would be starting to activate that commerce plan. So as soon as I, and I'll make sure that um, well, the partnership dictates that uh we have Breton and Antetex's involvement. As I said, we are doing the main aspect of it.
Yeah.
Um, and and that was in the agreement. They don't deliver, we do. So that's our role side. I can assure you, I'll make sure that that happens.
The key phrase in this is event partnership. And as an event partnership, it should be advertised as.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Not like old town councils opt us out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to say exactly about the same thing, but I'll go a bit further in as much as, rather than it being advertised as a partnership, it is advertised once. So whatever Breton put out is the same as we put out. We don't put out different posters because otherwise that does look like we're in conflict with each other. So we agree together on what it's going to look like, and when they put it out, we put it out, vice versa.
And includes both logos or is it partnership?
For that, for us.
Both should look the same and be uniform for the whole thing. I agree. That's just a note. Yeah. Right. Ninety-one twenty-four report on educational projects and school liaisons.
So again, um in future um, in future uh meetings, we will have a completely different format of um we haven't had a meeting for several months. Uh, so this could have gone for page after page after page because, so basically I'll pick the last report that Amber produced um for me in terms of her last second part of the spring term, just to give you a flavour of what um she does and what she's been up to. Uh, but in the future, we will take a completely different view and and it will format very similar to um the framework that we're, we're gonna um deliver for events. So we'll pick out some pertinent um aspects that we need to report about, what schools, how many children were involved, what was the uh topic of um, of, of the educational uh project? And some of the feedback, and I think some of the feedback is really uh brilliant, uh very honest, as you would expect from the kids. Um, and one thing, when I read this report, uh I thought, well, thankfully, they won't be saying that in the future when it was, they were talking about what was the worst part of our visit to Homes in Cable. And virtually every child said, it was absolutely brilliant. I wished it could be much longer, but it was cold because we didn't have any heating in this place for several months. Um, but now we have, and uh and and hopefully, you know, that will help benefit everybody, especially the young children that come and sit on the floor in the Guildhall, learning all about the aspects of the Guildhall stories.
Get cold.
And we'll get cold in the future.
No. Right.
I don't know whether there's any questions on that, but um, yeah.
I'd just say I think it's good to see a really detailed report like that, but you're, you're probably right. It's probably too much for us.
Yeah.
Um, and it could be calmed down a little bit, but it's, it's really interesting. I have a good read-through, but maybe not for it.
Every time. Right. Uh, moving on, ninety-two twenty-four, future use of the Guildhall Tea Room. Review and discuss how best to use the Guildhall Tea Room in the future as set out in supporting papers.
So we've had a number of conversations in the past about um how uh we should use the tea room. Um, I know there's been lots of discussion prior to the internal scaffolding being erected, which actually uh took that conversation or sold that conversation at the time because we couldn't do anything in there. Um, but there was questions about whether we should operate a traditional tea room, and it was decided that it wasn't cost-effective. The fact that we couldn't deliver anything in terms of um the tea room in any guise uh meant that um the tea room supervisor uh moved on. Um but now the scaffold is out, and we did say as soon as that was out, we would hit the ground running with new events. I think our suggestion is that it's a great facility in terms of um, you know, the service area, et cetera. I don't think anybody would uh would actually approve ripping it out and starting again. But what we can do is deliver it in a different way. So that area serves other events. D-Day was a classic example. We had an exhibition in there, but we also was able to serve teas, coffees, drinks and things like that and generated, you know, albeit small, a reasonable uh return. Uh, we've got lots of events planned. You see in the town events that we've got afternoon teas planned and things like that. So this room, we're able to, to do that. We've got a jazz event coming up. We've got a, a play coming up. We've had some interactive immersive theatre in terms of uh Witness with a Prosecution and the World War Experience. So I think that's how we should be looking at it. If you agree with that, one of the things that we don't want to do is confuse people. So we would have to change the name of the room. We've actually named it as the Guildhall Tea Room. So I think we need to probably possibly revert back to the Small Court because that's what it was always called. The big room to the side of us here is called the Large Court, and it actually depicts the uh, the heritage of that space. So I think, you know, there's two things. One, do you approve the roof coming forward in terms of event support? And secondly, if so, do we change the name of the room to whatever?
And comment?
I think if it's not going to be a tea room, then why call it that? Um, the, the event, the D-Day event, there were a lot of people who went into there who were delighted it was open again. Everybody said, is it back open full-time again? However, that's, that's quite a minority of people. And as you say, it's really difficult to find, even without the scaffold in there, even without everything else, it's still a difficult place to find, to open. What I would say is if we're going to do events in there, you need something more than an A-frame to signal that there is something on. And I think that might also link into what you're talking about with the large court when we've got craft on. Because it's, because we know it's a, we don't, especially visitors to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
No.
That was it.
You want that?
So the thought is we continue along that line and we're happy to change the name of the room.
Yeah. So we need, we need a, a person second up to that.
I'll be proposed.
Second up.
You're hiding down there.
You got a huge sound.
Seconding under it. You really have to put your sweet, sweet, stretchy arm out. There you go. Yeah, I am.
He probably had one, Ben. Probably had one.
Yeah, my three-two four. To the twenty-twenty-four Punjab Festival. Um, and what supportive venue to provide and to identify possible source of funding support is supposed to be provided. This is.
Yeah, um, just very briefly, um, this is another good example of an event that takes place on a fairly regular basis now in Bedford. It's really well-established. Um, it's really successful. It's been growing every year. Um, but for those of us that put on events on a, on a regular basis will understand that actually the funding package to deliver it is never guaranteed. There's no core funding from anybody. They rely on grant funding, particularly from places like the Arts Council, uh the Seacommune themselves, um uh Norfolk County Council, Breton Council, whoever. Um, historically, Fetterford Town Council support has been rather limited, so we've not tended to get involved, um which I think is a shame because um the Juleep Singh aspect of our heritage is actually really quite exciting and, you know, sat in the, I think it's officially the Juleep Singh ruling. Um, so I think we should support them. I've had a conversation with them and they would very much welcome town council support. And they've sent an email asking for a three-thousand-pound contribution. Um, given that it's literally around the corner, and I suspect they've already got the vast majority of funding in place, otherwise they wouldn't have been able to commit to what they're committing to. Um, I'm happy to propose that we contribute fifteen hundred pounds towards this year's activity um from our partnership events budget.
Yeah, Carla.
Um, I agree. I think they are well established, well attended, um and and showcase the element of their efficient contribution, which is needed. It brings a lot of people in. They're doing really well. Um, they actually put three thousand. You should, you you want to keep them up for this. On top of the new, I, I understand that. How do you see this? How does the council see that support going forward then for the next years if that's something that we're gonna keep on supporting, which, which I'm fully in favour to. I'm just wondering how do you see that going forward then?
Um, I think they need to approach us much earlier for next year, if indeed they are intending to put it on. Um, and, you know, all the, all these events are scalable, you know, if they get more funding. Um, previously, it was Fetterford and District Punjab Festival. Before that, it was Fetterford, um um Fetterford and Norfolk Punjab Festival or whatever. It has, it goes up and down depending on how much money.
Yeah.
Um, if they want to put something bigger on next year, then they need to talk to us earlier about our involvement. But I think um for what they're proposing to do this year, fifteen hundred pounds from the town council is a reasonable contribution.
Okay. So that's the proposal then, that gives them fifteen hundred pounds? So do we have a second for that?
Oh, sorry, but I was.
No, go on.
Yeah, yeah.
If we all looked up here and Chris went, no.
I think I can't see very well.
That's quite short.
I know. Yeah, by that.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, moving on, ninety-four twenty-four action points from previous meetings.
So in terms of the, so in terms of the action points from previous meetings, some have been um moved to other committees. Uh, and uh the ones that were left for this committee were pretty much covered in some of the areas um of the agenda. So I don't think there's anything really to review and mention there.
Okay, ninety-five twenty-four, community engagement. Um, to discuss and agree any consultational media release required.
Can we note Chris's suggestion of presenting the uh letter of thanks to the apprentice about the basket? I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, that makes sense. Is there anything else? Right, ninety-six twenty-four, committee officers' update. Right, ninety-seven twenty-four, exclusion of press and public. After we go that, do we consider resolving that? Excludes the press and public. We have got one thing below the line.
I, I have got one question. I, I wasn't quite sure why the, the ninety-eight twenty-four is below the line. I'll find out. I'll wind it in. Okay.
You should have got the recording.
Yeah.